All right. Good evening. It is now 7:01 PM on Tuesday, January 12, 2021. And I call this meeting of the Dayton Historical Commission to order. Please note that this meeting is being conducted remotely in compliance with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the 2019 novel coronavirus known as COVID-19. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on Comcast Local Channel 9 and the Town of Dayton YouTube channel. All votes tonight will be by roll call. We have Bill Pruitt with us, Pat Olson, Pam Nickerson, Rafa Delphin, and our liaison to the Board of Selectmen, Ken Pacheco. Ken is not a voting member of our commission. He is just here in a communication capacity. So first on the agenda is the Secretary's Report, and we have the minutes from December 8, 2020. And I do have an amendment. Under the James Briggs House, the fourth bullet says, where Mrs. Gales explains at the town meeting that Mr. Pacheco made a motion to put money into the house. There was not a second. And then Mrs. Gales suggests that Mr. Pruitt draft, and this is where the changes. His proposal regarding communication with the Board of Selectmen to be to be put on the agenda. Mrs. Gales suggested a liaison person with the Board of Selectmen. So that was one. And the second one was under new business. The one about the Sweet Knoll State Park actually belongs under correspondence. We received notification of a boat ramp excavation plan at Sweet Knoll State Park from the Mass Historical Commission. So those were the two things that I saw. Did anyone else have any amendments? No? Okay, I'll indicate a motion to accept the minutes as amended. Do we have a motion?
Oh, come on. I want to second it. No one's going to make a motion.
I can't make the motion.
Okay, I'll make. Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended for December 8, 2020.
And I will second it.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, Bill Pruitt? Rafa?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Pat Olson?
Aye.
And me, aye. Now, okay, we have accepted those minutes. The second set of minutes that we have to amend are from November 10, 2020. And it was a section in the minutes under the Winslow Davis House marker. And I believe you all got this information from Pam. What we're changing, the original sentence was, "Mr. Delphin delivered the plaque to Miss Elizabeth Blackwell. However, the plaque arrived damaged. It will be replaced." That is going to be amended to, "Mr. Delphin said that the plaque was delivered to Miss Elizabeth Blackwell by the sign maker, Robert Peach. But according to Miss Blackwell, the plaque arrived damaged. It will be replaced." Do I have a motion to make that amendment to the November 10, 2020 minutes?
I'll make a motion to make that amendment to the minutes of November 10.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
And I am aye. Okay, thank you. Those are done. Our next item of discussion is our FY '21 budget and our estimated expenditures for the rest of this year through June 2021. Right now, our budget balance is $1,965.90. We do have a purchase order out to JT Trophy for $160. Once we receive the Boston Post cane plaque and the invoice from JT Trophy, that invoice will be paid. So that will be one of our estimated expenditures. Right now, I don't see any other estimated expenditures. I don't know about anyone else. We had planned a lot of, we put money in for conferences and education, travel, and also for our archival stuff. But all of that kind of came to a screeching halt once COVID-19 restrictions were in place. So. Now for our FY 2022 budget, it's due, I have to have it back to Brett by January 31st. Right now, they're requesting level funded budgets. And our line items, we have equipment repairs and maintenance. Presently, we have $100 in that. Or this was what we estimated last year. Professional Technical was 750. Communications was $250. Other supplies was $700, and travel was 200 to make the total of the 2,000. When I looked at the budget sheet that came out of the Board of Selectmen's office today, proposing, they had taken out $100 for equipment and repairs. And we don't really have any equipment that belongs just to the Historical Commission. So I can understand that. I would say that if we take a look at the budget, we take that $100 and put it into $50 into the professional and technical, and then another $50 into other supplies. So that we maintain our level funded budget of $2,000. So, does anyone have any discussion?
Where, Pat, was the budget paying for the historic plaques that Rafa had set up? What category?
Those plaques are paid for by the homeowners. We don't pay for those.
Right, but initially, we were planning on doing it, so.
That would have come out of the other supplies.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because it's not.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd like to boost that. I'd like to see the money spent that way because it's not looking like we're going to be doing any travel. I feel that, you know, Rafa had lined up a woman who wanted the plaque. And then that fell through, I can only assume due to the budget.
It's a technicality with us paying for the plaque.
Right.
Those house markers, we cannot pay for.
I know we covered that.
Yeah.
That was disappointing for, you know, I know that was obviously disappointing for the homeowner too.
Right. I do know Rafa has a form to fill out for a plaque, you know, so there are people and a couple of other people, you know. So we just have to promote that and, you know, make sure that they know that they pay for the plaque, not the commission, the Town of Dayton.
And the money obviously goes to that Mr. Peach. Right, Rafa? Mr. Peach goes directly to Mr. Peach.
Yeah.
Has anybody heard from Liz Blackwell?
No.
No? Has anybody checked up on her?
I can try and follow up, Rafa. We can talk about that next. I mean, further on in the agenda.
Yeah, she's.
Bill, did you have some input?
Oh, no, really. I thought I did, but.
All right, so if we are looking at our budget for FY '22, 2022, we'd have zero in the equipment and repairs and maintenance. Professional and technical, we would have 800. Communications, we would have the 250. Other supplies would be $750. Travel would be 200. The total would be 2,000. And I need a motion to accept the budget as I described.
I make a motion to accept the budget as Pat Gales just described, the changes in the $50 there moving.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Pat. And so we'll have a vote. And Bill?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
And I, aye. Usually when we're all meeting together, we all have to sign the budget saying that we are in agreement with this budget before we pass it in. So seeing as how we are meeting online, it's kind of hard for everyone to sign the same document. So please email to me your acceptance and the words that you want to use, and I can email these later tonight, is, "I agree with the FY '22 proposed budget. Let this be my signature of acceptance during the COVID restrictions."
Are you going to send us that statement?
I can send it to you, yeah.
Thank you.
And then just make sure your name's underneath it, and I will put the emails with the budget. So that we can meet that requirement. I also have an appointment with Brett on February 8th to discuss our budget. I think it's at 9:30 or 10:00, somewhere in there. All right, are we good with the budget? Excellent. Moving on. Boston Post cane. Pat and Pam, you got information for us?
Yes, we had good luck with Mrs. Barbosa. There was, I mailed the letter. They didn't respond. She was very ill holidays. But I talked a while with her daughter, Burt. They share a home. Interesting story of Mrs. Barbosa. Burt and the brother John feel that they're excited and she's the proud matriarch. They called her their family, so they're definitely game for a ceremony. They would, in fact, I was driving by this morning on my way to work, and I saw the visiting nurses leaving on their Tuesday, Thursday schedule. And they go in, and then she gets communion on Wednesday. But anytime after, you know, 10:15, Burt did ask if we could please just keep the ceremony to, you know, maybe 10 minutes. I didn't, I didn't think that would really be a problem. They're aware that she doesn't receive the cane. They're aware that she'll receive, you know, a nice proclamation with some flowers. She probably won't wear a mask, but we will. She's not very mobile, and Burt described her as not well. So I think time is, you know, of the essence, but there, she was very open, Burt. She gave me an interesting story, which I'll type up later for us to all learn about, you know, her mother being born in the Azores, St. Miguel. So, yeah, I say, you know, we decide who's going to go. Where we can put the information, you know, Facebook page that we have, the website, whatever, with the town. Taunton Gazette would accept, I'm sure. Herald News would accept as well, I'm sure. Try to get as much publicity as we can. I had also talked with Pat Olson about the Strawberry Vine thing, but funny, we had talked about it, and then that arrived in the mail. And I realized it didn't appear that they take submissions, maybe other than, you know, Myrna's a regular columnist. So this would not be a regular column. So I'm not sure that would work, but I'd be, you know, I'd be happy to try.
Yeah.
Yeah, why not, right? So I think, I don't know, am I leaving anything out, Pat Olson?
No, but I thought the Strawberry Vine was an excellent idea because the only people who get it are the over 60 Dayton residents. And I'm sure the majority of them know nothing about the Boston Post cane. So to give a little write-up about that and to acknowledge Mrs. Barbosa as being, you know, the newest inductee, I think that'd be very nice in the Strawberry Vine, and I think Mrs. Souza would want that.
I would hope so. And, you know, now that we've been, I've had a phone call out to Mrs. Souza through you, Pat Gales, and she and I are, she's a very vibrant woman for her age. I would have never thought until Pat Olson had told me her approximate age, and she's, you know, really a good woman. So sure, if we give her a nice photo with a very short, brief write-up, again, great publicity to explain what the cane is and, yeah, make other people aware that perhaps they have a parent. Not that, you know, we want Mrs. Barbosa to pass on, but yeah, make them aware of this program and how they can be honored as well.
Also contacted the Board of Selectmen's office, and can I, I copied you on the email. And I am going to, I have an appointment with the Board of Selectmen tomorrow at 6:05 to talk about the presentation of the Boston Post cane to Mrs. Barbosa. So Pam, if you could just, you know, get us, get me some information that I can share with them. And ask them for a certificate or a resolution. And Leanne was in contact with me today as, you know, to work on that. So I guess the Board of Selectmen will be doing something to, a certificate for her. Okay?
So.
Finally. What was that?
Yeah, that's a Zoom meeting, so if anybody else wants to participate in that, they can.
Okay.
Yeah.
Six, what?
Six o'clock, I'm not sure.
Yes, schedule.
Five?
Yeah, I can send you the link if you want it, Pam. I can, I'll send it to everybody.
Okay, please.
Yeah, you're scheduled for 6:05, so it's pretty early for me.
Okay, I'll send that to everyone. If you're interested, you can choose to attend.
Do we have any thoughts on who should be there? Um. I have a nice camera I'm going to borrow from my daughter to take a picture. I don't necessarily need to be in it. When we write it up, we're going to have all of our committee members mentioned with our titles, so.
I think Pam and Pat, since you're the committee for the Boston Post cane, that you definitely should be there. I can go as the Chair of the Historical Commission. But if that's too many people for Mrs. Barbosa and her family, then I would gladly step aside.
Okay, let me check again with Burt, the daughter, when we settle on the time. And Pat Olson, do you have a day? We did talk about how time is of the essence here, so.
I think it should be during the day. I don't think it should be a nighttime thing. You're the one who, you know, right now is working, so whatever fits in your schedule right now, I am very open to whatever.
Okay, let me call Burt and see if next week we can get a day in on, say, 11, that would give her time with the nurses and with the priest that visits. Is that suitable, you think? Any day better than others?
11th is a Monday?
It's, no, I'm sorry, I said at 11.
Oh, all right, 11 o'clock.
Yep, 11 o'clock next week. So Monday's the holiday. I don't know, we want to, want to shoot for the 20th, which would be the Wednesday, you think?
That would be good for me.
Okay. I will call Burt. I have her cell phone and make sure that that will work with Mrs. Barbosa.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad we finally got that going. It took a little, a little while, but I certainly understand with her illnesses. They had said that the daughter had told me that she's now on hospice. But she's, interesting story. I'm glad we finally got that, that one moving forward.
Can, did you have something to add?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Ken, did you have something to add?
I was just going to say, if it's at all possible, now, I want the Historic Commission members, whoever wants to go, to go. But if it's possible that I could go as a representative of the Board of Select, then I would also like to participate. However, I want the members of the Commission to be the first, you know, if she says four people, it should be four members.
Sure, okay.
Otherwise, I would like to attend.
Okay, we'll work on that.
I'll work on that.
I think the family would like that very much, to have a representative from the Board of Selectmen.
Especially someone close to her age.
Exactly, someone almost as old, yes, Ken. I was thinking the same thing.
So my mother's 103, so she's older, but she, she doesn't live in Dayton.
I'm not, I'm sorry, I meant.
Wrong town, Ken, sorry.
Yeah, but she's, she's visiting me at this house.
I really don't care, Ken. I really don't care. Has she lived 50% of her life or more in Dayton? Oh, no, she hasn't.
Oh, I don't believe in that rule anyway, but that's okay.
All right, moving on to the plaque. Pam, did you get that town seal PDF?
I did. I sent that off to Paul at JC, and I'm wondering what his lag is now. But I will be in touch with him again. I've emailed him twice in the past week, once with the seal, once checking up. I did call him. He didn't call me back. I'm wondering if he's got his food truck business going. I'm not sure. But I will stay on that. I think he's, he's good for it. He's showed Pat Olson and I the picture of the plaque already, so it's in. He just wanted the money and the seal, of course, because that was the technicality of, of working with that seal.
Good, good. Okay, the walking tour of the National Register districts, we had talked about that, I think, in November, Pat, with the library. So we probably should do a little pre-planning with that. If you could reach out to Jocelyn and kind of brainstorm what this should look like. And then I'll work on doing some of the research on the two districts. And then we.
Okay, I've already started doing research on the districts.
Okay.
I was wondering if, being in genealogy, if you would be interested in doing something about the people who lived in the houses at the time.
I can do that, yeah, yep.
So we certainly know the house numbers in each district. We know what buildings we're looking at. When we talked about the brochure, I thought maybe we could even include the piece about the library. It's not in the district, but, I mean, it's like an anchor of the town kind of thing. If you don't think so, that's fine.
All right. So we'll start work, I'll start working on that. If you can reach out to Jocelyn. And then we'll just kind of start putting some stuff together for February. Okay, great. All right. Next, under preservation, preservation planning is our survey and planning grant that, and our grant application. So our letter of intent was accepted by the Mass Historical Commission. We were notified just before Christmas, and I have received the grant materials, and I have shared some of those with you. I did speak with Peter Stott from the Mass Historical Commission, and he provided the scope of work document, which I sent to you, and suggestions for writing the grant. Our present survey has many outdated and incomplete forms on it. Over the years, the criteria for documenting the historical resources and properties has changed from when past commissions have worked on it and actually, you know, are more detailed now. So when we wrote our letter of intent, we were looking to identify those properties that were the older ones in town, making sure that those were documented. And he suggested that we narrow that down to specific areas in town. Like we have the North Dayton Village, the Lower Taunton River area, there's the Center Street area, Mount Hope. There's five or six areas that are listed on the Macris website. And Myrna had put together a document that also listed some, some areas to be thinking about. So I spent some time last night looking at the Macris website, looking at the dates that forms were completed, kind of like just picked a few here and there to see how complete they were. And a lot of the ones that are, are older properties do need some updating. And they were kind of like in the Segregance area on Somerset Ave, going south down 138 to almost like where Pleasant Street, Main Street is, and then up Center Street. There's also the old Briscoe Path one that goes up Elm Street, so there's quite a few, quite a bit of properties going that way. If we look at the sites in North Dayton, in the Mount Hope and the North Dayton Village, those properties aren't as old in comparison to the properties in the Segregance area and the Lower Taunton River area. Those are later 1800s to 1900s. So anyway, that's what my thought process was on how to narrow, narrow it down and almost to tier it. So that we start at Segregance, then when maybe there's 25 properties there, then we go to like to Main Street, and there's another 10 there until, because we'll get approximately 100 forms done if we get the grant. So before I go on, does anyone have any thoughts to this? Any input?
Well, what about the homes in North Dayton that are from the 1700s?
I don't think there are any, to be honest.
We, we talked at a meeting about the house. I, I said it was a couple doors down from the liquor store on the corner of Spring and Lincoln Avenue, but it's right next door. It's a little house. It's built in the 1700s?
Oh, I know which house you mean. Yeah, there, there are some, Pat, you know, but.
There are, yeah. So we're not touching those this time, or, I mean, they're old. They're old.
Right. The point is like, there are so many of them. It's like, where are we going to start? Where it's going to be our starting point?
Well, do we want to do it geographically? Or do we want to do it by oldest houses? What do you want to do?
Oh, that's, we can do it by oldest houses.
May I ask, was there a reason why Mr. Stott suggested we do areas?
For organization and just that there's so many that needs to be done. It gives us a point and a reference to start. Anybody else? Okay. I mean, certainly we could tier it, you know, so that that would be included, the older homes in North Dayton. Because I'm thinking that we have to put like, you know, start here, then go here, go to, you know, start at Somerset Ave, go down to Main Street, then go to wherever we decide next. So that you have some point of organization to it.
Pat, I don't mean Pat Olson, I mean, you said there was a house in North Dayton Village that is a 1700s house. Is that what you said? Can you, can you describe? I'm familiar with that area.
Okay, you know what Johnny's Market is?
Yeah, yeah.
If you're looking at the liquor store right to the left, look at the chimney. It has the black line at the top of the chimney, which, Ken, what did that mean? You were a wig or a Tory, or what did that mean?
It means there's a black line along the chimney.
Yeah. Okay, it means something, and you know it. Or it signified to people at the time which political way you were going. That was the significance of the black mark on the chimney. Or it signified to people at the time which, uh, political way you were going. That was the significance of the black mark on the chimney.
Well, well, anyway, how, how did you determine, you, we didn't look it up or anything?
I didn't determine anything, it just is. Uh, I just didn't want North Dayton to be left out of this.
I see, I see.
If we want to go by region, I'm, I'm all right with that, but I mean, there are older homes in North Dayton that I just didn't want to be overlooked, that's all, but you want to go by region, I'm fine with that.
There were some eighteen, I, I'm very interested in that house that you're just talking about. We should be able to look it up on our tax database, right? We know, if we know the-
Yeah, yeah.
See what, what they have for-
Yep, yep.
There are, on School Street, there are a lot of, um, eighteen hundreds, mid eighteen hundreds, like, I think eighteen fifties houses. The village itself, where I live, and so forth, Chase Street, and everything, a lot of those are mostly nineteen, early nineteen twenties.
Yeah, so we'll stay away from the nineteen hundreds, but Pat, the listing that you sent out, not that long ago, maybe three weeks ago?
Yeah.
I didn't see for sure that, it's a Lincoln Avenue address, I don't know the number. Rafa, would you know the number? It's on your side of the street.
What color is the house?
I think it's white right now.
I know what house you mean.
Isn't that the Duns, where the Duns lived? I don't know if you remember them or not, but-
I don't know, I don't know.
There's two houses, like capes, right, small capes?
This is a small cape.
Right, okay.
With the blacktop chimney.
That's interesting, okay. Well, we should check that out, and, or use that-
Yeah, I don't want them left out, that's all.
We, we know that it's acceptably into the range of dates that we want, so, okay, I got it, yeah. Okay.
We could start geographically, and then add those to make sure, you know, like, the ones that we know are seventeen hundred houses, add those to be done. This is just to get us started, and as we go along, we can, um, change the scope of work.
I think that's a great idea. I wouldn't, I don't want to see the Maya Amada here, area, left out of the picture.
And I want to see your area represented as well, exactly.
But we have to start, you know, have a plan to start somewhere, and where is it going to be to start? I, I thought Sagréganset because it's the center of the town, really. And it does have a lot of historic, um, thing, um, homes there.
Not anymore.
I'm not laughing, but I'm laughing at your, at your delivery. I'm laughing at your delivery.
All right, um, I do need a volunteer, like, someone to help to work on the, um, the narrative and the objectives with me. Because I kind of want, like, need someone to read what I write, because I don't mind writing, and then add to it, or take away, or say, oh, it doesn't make any sense.
I can, I can proofread, if you want.
Okay, Rafa, I'd appreciate that, thank you. All right. So I'll be sending you the stuff that I've worked on, and we can go from there, and we can talk. So the grant is due February eighth. We have a meeting on January twenty-first with the CPC for the twenty-five thousand dollars, and I'll speak again to our grant request.
Yeah, we have, we have to push them for the money.
I guess that's my job, um.
Yeah, well, yes, you're cool.
Yeah.
That's your job, Bill.
I'm gonna really study everything in detail, so I know everything. And then test the waters a little bit, see what's going on, and then try to emphasize the importance to the town and so forth, that we do this, and-
Okay, that, that's good. Do you want to review the grant application before we send it in, or are you good with Rafa and I doing it, or or, Ken, what is the usual procedure? Do you review grant applications as, when they're done for the town?
I know that Mallory, Mallory would, and right now Brett's doing Mallory's job, so you, you probably want to run it by Brett.
Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna need his signatures on it anyway, so he will, um, you know, be happy. So I'm gonna set up a meeting with him to do that, then. Okay, great. All right.
Uh, excuse me, oh, just, that application, um, I don't have it in front of me, but that's that handwritten right, application.
That was the letter of intent.
Okay.
Um, that I sent to you.
Accepted that, right.
They've already accepted that. Now, I sent the scope of work, or maybe yesterday afternoon, I just got it yesterday morning. Uh, so we're working on that, and I had sent you the criteria, and, uh, the selection process, and kind, and their components of what they want in the grant.
But the, the, is there a separate application that has to go in?
All of those are components of the application with, um, a cover sheet and a budget sheet.
Where does the sample scope of work fit into that application procedure, anyway?
In your na, it's in your narrative.
Is that right? So what, what is the total app, what is the package, the application package, and includes the sample scope of work for community-wide survey, right?
It includes your scope of work, it includes your budget, it includes a narrative of-
Which was on the back, was that on the back of something? In other words, maybe there was that, um, someplace, one of these, uh, documents, there was a handwritten pot in the front, and on the back was a, like, a typed, uh, sort of, why we-
That was, that was our letter of intent that we submitted.
So I'm still at a loss a little bit about the application now. I got the scope of work pot, and then where-
Yeah, I didn't send you all of the attachments.
All right.
I just sent you the, the narrative piece of it that we need to do.
When, that has to be in to the-
February eighth.
Like, February eighth?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, who's taking care of that? Are you taking care of that, or who's gonna send it? Okay.
Yeah. And I'll be the, um, the coordinator, the project coordinator.
Do you need any review of that? Have we re-
That's what I was just asking, if you wanted to do that.
Okay, yeah, I, I'd like to.
Okay. When it's done, we can send you, we'll send, we'll send everyone a copy to review.
Great, because it's important that that, because you only get a one shot on that, once that goes in, you know, can't read, you can't, uh-
No, no, there's no taking, taking it back, yeah.
Yeah, so we want to make sure that, that that's-
Okay. All right, uh, we kind of talked about the Winslow Davis House marker briefly. Rafa, you haven't heard from Liz Blackwell, I'll reach out to her and see what we can do. All right, James Briggs House, um, the demolition has been completed. It began December twenty-first, and the site was cleared by the, um, week's end, and I put this here just because I wanted our minutes to reflect that it was done.
Did he also demol, did he also demolish the historic doghouse?
I think they did.
Did? How dare they?
It wa, I was there yesterday, and, um-
So do we know what parts of the house were saved, like doors, windows, whatever?
Doors were saved, the sunburst that was over the front was saved, um, the mantel, I believe, some of the wood. There was talk of the beams, but I don't know if they did save the beams, because when I walked by, it looked like at one point there was a chimney fire there. But yes, there were, some latches were saved, um, door latches. Ken, do you know anything else?
Uh, no, I don't. I think everything you've mentioned. I know that if they were gonna save beams, that we're gonna put it in the Sagréganset school, so I'm not sure if they, they-
Okay.
I saw it being demolished early that morning, I didn't see that they were, uh, taking anything out, but I think they took the mantel and other stuff out prior to the-
Right, right, right.
Are, are they gonna finish the, um, it, it looks to me like the, um, excavation of the foundation is incomplete. Are they going to be digging that out and covering it over, and landscaping it, or what are they gonna do?
I don't know what they're gonna do with the foundation.
I saw in the process, when I drove by there, that looked like they had filled it in, the, the basement, or the but then now it doesn't look that way, it's kind of odd, did they screw some stuff up?
I can ask Jim.
Because right now, it doesn't look good. It looks rather diff, difficult to look at.
I saw it yesterday too, Bill, I, I agree. Kind of hodgepodge.
Well, moving along with that, given that the house is no longer there, I had this thought that we should, um, discuss putting a marker or a plaque there to denote that as the site of the James Briggs House. Of course, we'd have to talk with the Board of Selectmen about that, because that is the, the property. Ideas? Good idea, bad idea?
Well, weren't they, aren't they going to, uh, create like a community garden out of that space? Was that the idea?
Yeah, that's the idea, yeah, but they can have space for a plaque.
Why don't we just name that community garden James Briggs Community Garden?
I like, I prefer that, yeah, I mean, and we would need some explanation, I, I mean, I'd be curious about how many people would really know who, what-
Right, who James Briggs was, okay. Now, Ken, as our liaison, do you want to bring that to the Board of Selectmen, or do you want me to write like a memo?
You can write a memo, but I'll bring it up at the, uh, Board of Selectmen, it won't be at tomorrow night's-
Right, okay.
Down the road, but I don't mind that, the, we're in the process of, I think we've had the land surveyed, and we're in the process of determining where the community gardens are gonna be. So I'm okay with that. I don't know if anybody else had thought about calling the community garden something different. There's obviously a, a whole group of people that are working on the community gardens, so they're gonna want some input on this, so it won't be just the Board of-
Right, right, it'd have to go to the, like, their committee, too.
Right, the, the agricultural commission is involved with it, then there's a subcommittee, and there's people in town. Girl Scouts, I believe, are gonna be involved in the community gardens, so I would want their input also as to what they want to call it. So I do agree a hundred percent that there should be a plaque there.
Okay.
Saying that the house was there, and maybe with a little bit of history.
Right, right, that's what I was thinking, you know, just something that tells us a little bit of the story of James Briggs, and why that property is important. The house isn't there, but the property still is, and it's still history. Okay, does anyone want to work on that? Nope, okay, I'll do it. I'll get it done. All right. Yes, right, other, does anyone have any other discussion on the marker, a possible plaque or in the garden? Nope. Okay. Under other, yes, we do still have two vacancies, um, we would love to fill them. I did ask if anyone had filled out an application at the Board of Selectmen to volunteer for our commission, but no, no one has stepped up, so I try to ask everyone I see that I think might be interested, and would be helpful for us, but I'm not getting anywhere. So anyway, um, I think-
So, yeah, on the other, uh, if you remember, Frederick Anderson was buried at the Unitarian Church, he was a Civil War hero, he got a Medal of Honor. Well, the families coming down, the Board of Selectmen's been notified that the family's coming down the end of March to give the town, uh, the Medal of Honor. Now, it's gonna be placed at the police station in an area, you know, if you've been to the police station in the foyer, there's a glass area that'll be safe there. So there'll be some kind of ceremony, I'm not sure if any, if the sort of commission wants to participate in that, there'll it may be some ceremony at his gravesite at the Unitarian Church. But the town is looking to see what can be done to kind of celebrate, uh, Mr. Anderson's life, and to show some respect to the family, because they're coming from, I think, the Midwest here, and to give us that, and assuming COVID's a little bit better, because they're gonna come the end of March, we can do something outside, perhaps. Uh, but I would hope that maybe the commission would want to participate in that in some way. I've asked the Veterans Agent, as you may know, he's, he's left, but he's volunteering until we get a replacement, so he may or may not be a Veterans Agent in March, uh, but they'll be participating also, and Tim Ryan's also in the past has been involved in this, and I believe the community church wants to be involved in this, so I just wanted to bring it up to the commission. The last week of March, they're coming down, there'll be a date set, I'm sure, as the one, there'll be some kind of a celebration. But-
Um, absolutely, I think it's important that the commission be involved with that. So do keep us posted, and, you know, if there's anything that we need to do on this.
And, and we have a write-up, maybe Myrna Anderson wrote up the write-up on Mr. Anderson, but there is a two-page write-up on his, the history of him, uh, in town, and, uh, his history in the Civil War.
Who did the write-up?
I'm not sure, but it may have been Myrna, I'm not sure.
Okay.
It's a two-page, uh, write-up. If you wanted to scan it in and send it to you, Pat, if you want.
Okay, perfect, yes, that would be great, thank you. Okay. Moving on to course.
Still on the other thing, right?
Yeah.
I have a proposal for an agenda, uh, to be put on either next month's agenda or anything like that, but I mean, I recently, uh, read a book called A Passion for Preservation by, uh, Catherine Warren and The Shaping of Modern Newport. Newport had a lot of difficulties in the turn of the century, uh, into the twenty, like, well, the nineteen fifties was the beginning of trouble, where they were losing out a, a lot of, um, of those mansions, for instance, and so forth. And this woman stepped up and formed the present-day Newport Preservation Society. I've been a member since the eighties, and, um, in this, I had never read this book until maybe a week ago. And it, it tells a story of what this woman and the early group had, was up against. And it sounds very similar, on a different scale, to what Dayton is, the, on the be, the sort of, we're on the beginning cusp of what they were back in the late fifties, or when they started the Preservation Society. And all of the mechanisms that they learned would work, you know, and so forth, how they dealt with, uh, Newport. Newport was pushing against them, they didn't want any part of it, because it, it upset their, uh, their ideas of, uh, you know, um, renewal, urban renewal, that they had plans, they were afraid, you know, so there was a lot of players, and they went over the city, basically, as time went by. So, and here is sort of like a, a lot of secrets that and failures, but ultimate success, because Newport is probably one of the most successful Preservation Society. The ti, the city of Newport today is a very vibrant and in the fifties, they were ready to roll over, they were in bad shape, the Navy had left, and things like that, so, anyway, I, I would, you know, recommend this book to anyone, it's only fifteen dollars, you can get it at Amazon.
So what was the title of it again?
It's called A Passion for Preservation by Catherine Warren and The Shaping of Modern Newport.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, so maybe, I could, if not everyone wants to buy the book and read it, but I could just extract some of the major points, and, and then we could discussion on some-
Have like a book group, you mean?
What?
Have a book group?
Yeah.
I would like a book group.
Well, we should take it out of the budget.
I was gonna say, fifty bucks is a little steep for my budget for a book.
Fifteen, fifteen.
Oh, I thought you said fifty.
I just wrote down-
Sorry, you know, no, it's a paperback.
Okay, and now, now you're talking, I'm gonna-
It's a great book for a pres, for anybody who want, is, is doing preservation work.
Okay. The money goes back to the Newport Society, which is, I'm fine with that, too, so.
Okay.
All right, um, under correspondence, we have a, a copy of a letter that was- Huh?
We go back to other?
I'm sorry, yes, Pat.
Okay, um, I understand that Tom Ferry and his people are shorthanded. Any progress on the case being put in the Old Town Hall for- Any progress on the case being put in the Old Town Hall for the cane?
Who are you asking?
I'm asking you, Ken.
I know that, I know that they're very busy because they've, you know, the Selectmen's meeting room.
Yes.
Still working on that. I was there yesterday, they were taking the Christmas train, you know, three workers were taking the Christmas train away from the front of the building.
Oh, thank God, they're moving the Christmas train, that's good.
I think it's been facetious, but anyway. I know they're, they're busy, they may be using some of the, the wood from the James Briggs House to make the, the display for the cane, but I don't think there's been any progress on that.
I, I ran into Tom a few times. I try to stop whenever I see him by the edge of the road. I understand he's shorthanded, I understand they're busy. But we've been hearing this now for a couple of years, you know, really, a couple of years, so.
Are there any woodworkers in the group here?
No, I'm not.
No?
You know who would have been good, would have been Don Pratt?
Yes.
He would have done an excellent job, you know, but he's no longer with us, so.
Do you know, are you planning on, you know, that, that little room that's part of the Selectmen's old meeting room? Are we going to put our file cabinet in there, do you know? Historic Commission's file cabinet?
That's, that's what I understood the plan was to be, that it was going to go there and we'd have a little corner kind of work spot.
It's going to be a desk there, there'll be a computer.
Yeah.
They're working on it, they, they're going to put the copper in, maybe it's already, it wasn't there yesterday, maybe it's there now. But they're getting close to, to finishing that up.
We can have a little work spot.
The town accountant will be in the other spot.
Yeah, so, okay. Anything else under other? Okay. Correspondence, we had another letter, a copy of a letter from the Mass Historical Commission. And this was from the BWC Green Brook LLC, their solar farms. It was regarding the solar farms at 903 Tremont, Zero Tremont and 624 Middle Street, asking for additional information to ascertain the project impact on historical archaeology things in that area. It's more for our information and to, and we don't really have to do anything unless we want to make comments to it. The other piece of correspondence that we got was from the postcard from the Mass Historical Commission and it's about their MPPF grant application, but it's really for properties that are already listed on the State Register of Historic Places, so we wouldn't qualify for it. And that's all that I have. Our next meeting date is February 9th at 7:00 PM via Zoom. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. A second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Pat, aye. Okay, all right, thank you, Ken, for joining us. And thank you, everyone, I think it was productive and I'll be sending some stuff and we'll see you soon. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Ken, can I ask you a fast question?
Sure.
Do you speak any Portuguese?
Only swear words.
No, come on, because I'm sure if you came to Mrs. Bob Bos's home and said something to her like, congratulations, you know, not a lot, but if you.